Hey, welcome to the village board meeting for the village of Pleasantville. Today is Mondays, July 25. First work session item is to discuss our electric vehicle charging stations. A community member extraordinary that's been joining us virtually. Hello, community member, sir.
Thank you for having me.
So Eric, do you want to lay out the issues?
Sure. So we've been digging into the electric vehicle charging stations that will be installed in Memorial Plaza in the north median. The intent is to acquire two dual port charging stations. So we've had discussions with Blink on various options, whether it was a hybrid leasing model, a lease or a purchase. Ben has been gracious enough, very plugged into this industry. And we run a ROI calculator on what it would look like. Ben, I don't want to, you know, go into too much detail, but essentially we're leaning towards acquiring the units and detailing out the return on investment when we make our money back by, and then also having conversation about what those regulations around EV charging stations would look like. So Ben, did you want to share screen on the ROI?
Uh, sure. So let me, uh, let's see if I'm allowed to do that.
You have the case of the city, I think now.
It's exciting.
Use them wisely.
Okay. So you see the Microsoft Excel, I assume?
Yeah.
Okay. So this was, um, this was provided by Blink and this was using their, so if we, I've added a couple of comments and Eric and I were on, you know, a call with Brandon, who was a Pleasantville resident and is with Blink. So I added anything in the little, um, at the top, this, these sections were added by me. Otherwise it's everything as provided by Brandon over at Blink. And this assumes also, this is all based, well, I guess we'll dig into this. So this assumes hardware cost, if we take a look at this cell, D25, assumes a purchase price of about seventeen seven, seventeen thousand seven hundred and eight dollars. And then it goes down and explains just regarding, um, regarding usage. So they base the usage on their industry standard, which I think is about six percent utilization. And that means during a 24 hour period, how much utilization was used? And so we based it on their industry standard that they're seeing across the board. So, and I think-
Percent of the time?
Yeah. So, sorry, what's the question?
Percent utilization means six percent of each day?
Six percent of each day? Yes. So that's all the chargers. They're estimating six percent of each charger each day.
Okay.
And, and, and the thing about that is that I would say is a little bit on the low side, but I didn't want to adjust it because our uptake on EVs nationwide is higher than the national average. Um, and we also have an incentive that we have like, you know, a parking lot that is somewhat sought after and it is centrally located. So I think this is a very conservative number, but I didn't want to, you know, inflate it. I'd rather be, uh, on the conservative side. I'm trying to, you know, protect the village's money in this respect. So, but there, there is good news. So this is based on six percent utilization. And then it, and we go into, if you see year one down in, under expenses, it talks about cost electricity based on estimated utilization, transaction fees, if there's credit cards or other sorts. The network fee is the Blink fee, the $720 is the fee that Blink charges to run this. And then host revenue share, they have a revenue split on if we own the equipment, but they're running the network. So the way Blink works is you have like a Blink account, you drive, there's no cost to be a Blink member, but you drive up. You have your membership or your member ID and you drive up, you plug in and then you start charging and then Blink in essence charges you. And then Blink will then reimburse the village. So that's why there's a host revenue share. So if we take a look at the bottom on rows 32 and rows 33, we're looking at a hardware cost of seventeen thousand for the hardware. Now there's a whole separate program just regarding the electrical install and that was, you know, Con Ed, there were all these various rebates. We're assuming right now, and we have good news, but we're assuming that we have to pay for the hardware just for this ROI calculation. So seventeen thousand, give or take out the door. And then each year our share that we get, so we get twenty one hundred, the first year, so we drop to fifteen. We get twenty six the next year. So it drops to twelve eight and so forth. So we're looking at conservatively, worst case, you know, year six will be net positive. If we notice this, this is twenty eight thirty eight. So now the thing that this doesn't, so it, based on their 10 years, the internal rate of return is seventeen percent, which is very, uh, that's a high internal rate of return. So that's quite good. The one element to this that really sweetens the deal is there's a program that Nicerda is running. And Nicerda gives a lot of rebates and based on if we apply and we use certain hardware, we can actually, it looks like we can get rebated the full amount of the seventeen seven, which would be huge. So we won't know that for sure until we actually install it, apply for it, then Nicerda reviews it. But based on everything I've read and I've read through in a fine tooth comb, the Nicerda stuff, I've looked over the website, like I've really dug into this much deeper. And I realized like some mistakes that Blink had made. Uh, they had proposed equipment which wasn't Nicerda approved. So I spoke to Eric, we had a conversation and we ended up switching different hardware. So we really think that from, uh, day one, we're going to have a, a net positive if we get that hardware cost rebated, which my feeling is, uh, I'm pretty confident that we will get the rebate. So-
In the, in the first year?
Yeah. Uh, well, I don't know how, we would get it. I, I actually, I don't know how the payback works for the rebate. That's a whole, I haven't looked at regarding how they actually compensate the village. So all I know is based on the, the amount of money and everything that I've seen would be, we would get rebated that full amount.
We've been dealing with Nicerda with the finance market brands and they've been pretty reliable.
So then we own the equipment if the snowplow knocks it over or a car accident knocks it over, that's ours to resolve.
Yes. So the way it works is, um, so if we take a look at, at the top right here is there's a difference between equipment failures, like manufacturer defects and vandalism. So none of the carriers cover vandalism. So snowplow, I mean, that's, I would, it's not vandalism, but that's, you know, that's not a manufacturer defect. So we would be on the hook for that. And the same with vandalism. They, they don't see much vandalism, um, in the Blink network. Uh, so that's not really an issue. So, and we've, we've made changes. Eric and I had discussed just regarding making sure that like the cables don't get run over. So we've added cable management and that's all included. So if you take a look in our top cell, we added like the four year extended warranty. So it's five years total for any defects. We added cord management to make sure no one drives over the cord. The one thing that Eric and I had discussed, and this is something that we'll have to have a conversation with Jeff about, is I'm a little nervous of not using ballards, which are the metal, the steel poles, just to make sure that someone doesn't mistakenly back into the, the hardware. So that's the one, you know, unknown on that front. But overall Memorial Plaza, I mean, the police department's there, there are cameras. I don't know if the cam, what the camera coverage is. But that's something that we should have a conversation with the, the police department, just to make sure that we're covered on that.
All right. So what, in, in, in the end, this is an argument for us buying the equipment.
Yeah. So, uh, the other alternative is, is, uh, they have a leasing method where you just pay three seventy, three seventy eight a month for leasing. But then the challenge is that, uh, we're spending forty five hundred dollars. So if we take a look up here, we're spending forty five hundred dollars a year to pay for the lease. And so the concern is that if we're doing forty five hundred, we're, we're paying forty five hundred, we're only, the revenue in theory would be twenty one seventy six and going across our, our ROI isn't very good. And there's more risk to the village from a cost perspective.
And there would be no Nicerda reimbursement, right?
Uh, well, we wouldn't, I don't think we would get, I think technically we don't own the equipment. So I don't know how Nicerda would work in that respect, because we're not, I don't think we're buying the equipment.
For the purchase price if we, that we used it.
We don't purchase it. Yeah.
So now what, what they're also discussing, whether Blink was the right choice?
Yes. So the challenge with Blink, and this came out, Blink didn't really understand Nicerda. And they weren't too focused on that. Uh, ChargePoint is definitely more involved in this. And so when Eric and I were going over this, I noticed that what Blink was proposing wouldn't work. Um, and Blink doesn't even have a Nicerda approved charger that can do what we need. So we can't actually utilize Blink if we want to get, you know, hardware cost rebated by Nicerda. So that's when we started looking at ChargePoint. ChargePoint has really embraced Nicerda. And they have a lot more equipment that's been approved. So it's a very similar price. It's a little bit less, I think about a thousand bucks less. But it's a similar ROI and a similar, you know, pricing structure. So we would get, uh, what in a, very similar to what Blink had proposed. But it would be through ChargePoint. And the, the pros and cons of ChargePoint is ChargePoint has a lot of chargers. It's actually the number one charging provider in the United States. So they have a lot of locations in, in the US and even in our area. But I, I'm not too focused about our, uh, the general area. I'm really, these are going to be used by Pleasantville residents just due to the speed of the, the way they charge. They're not high speed charging. So typically it's going to be easy, you know, three to, you know, six, seven hours, someone's going to be plugged in. So it's going to be more focused on longer term, someone's being here. So you're not really going to get transient people coming through to plug in and charge.
And is that not an option to get a higher speed charger?
Yeah. So we looked into this pretty deeply and there's a lot of different things happening. It's not viable for what's currently installed. So Con Ed couldn't get, uh, the amount of power that they needed in, uh, these high speed level three fast chargers. They were going to be very costly. Uh, NiPA really only wants these, i- i- if for this part of the Memorial Plaza like spots, these four were, this is what we're going to get. And this is the best we can get. There's a lot of different elements involved just regarding electricity distance runs, uh, what we can get through ChargePoint, what we can get through Nicerda approved. So for this part, and this is something I've gone back and forth with Eric about, is that for these four, we're getting the best electricity. Like I've tried to, you know, push and try to see if we can get higher powered, but we're kind of limited. For what we're getting, but the upside is that, uh, this is going to generate income for the village. So once we do the Memorial Plaza, the other part of it, um, Eric knows how eager I am to be involved much earlier on, just to ensure that we can get more power. So those EV chargers can be a higher powered and, and fast charging ideally.
Then, um, did we want to just take a couple of minutes now to talk about the parking regulations around, uh, these spaces? What we see in other communities is that you don't actually charge. So if somebody goes to park, you're not actually feeding a meter. You charge for the electrical usage. So we would charge per kilowatt hour at, at a rate, um, of, uh, right now in this ROI, we're saying forty five cents per kilowatt hour. If you are on the machine at a point past you being fully charged, you would incur a occupancy fee, which we're proposing at a dollar after 30 minutes of, uh, so you have a grace period of 30 minutes and then you're still on it, you're getting charged a dollar an hour. We would provide-
So that, and that, that is, uh, higher, but not strategically higher than the base parking.
Correct. The base parking fee is seventy five cents an hour.
We, we want to chart, we want to try to encourage usage. That's the overall goal. Typically occupancy fees are much higher. But we're trying to be, you know, nice about this initially, just to see, to push usage. Cause we're going to have scenarios where someone goes into the city, they plug in and they might be in the city for nine hours, but they charge for six. So we don't want to hit them too hard with a occupancy fee.
And, and, uh, so what would that mean for a Memorial Plaza permit holder?
So that, that's a point, I mean, well, there's several options, but we could make these spaces available to anyone. That, that would enhance the use as much as possible, right? So-
Right. Well, you know, whatever, somebody doesn't live here, coming to shop here or go to move.
Correct.
Right? That's, that's the goal, right?
So and they'd be available 24/7. You don't have to have a permit and you don't need-
And indeed, I guess the issue there is these are not permit spots.
Yeah.
The fact that you have a permit, that, that people might imagine that because they have a permit, they wouldn't have the occupancy.
Correct.
That's complicated. And then essentially you have somebody just occupying spaces.
Correct. So probably the best path forward is to have, you know, EV cars only being able to park in these spaces. And that's what makes them actually eligible for a lot of this grant funding is you have to, yeah, have to have that.
But my point is that a permit holder who has an electric vehicle could, yeah, would have to park there every day because-
Well, I mean, yeah, technically you wouldn't need to pay for the commuter tag. You could just park in the EV spot and plug in and charge.
But I think we should still have the occupancy fee because otherwise we don't want commuters just-
Well, two things, two things. One thing is that if the occupancy fee can only charge if you're plugged in. So the occupancy is planned like that's, you have to have an occupancy fee, otherwise people will just leave it plugged in and not charge. And then we're not generating revenue from the charging and then we're wasting a spot and we're not getting parking income. So you, you want an occupancy fee. And then the other thing is that if someone's not charging, so if they're not plugged in physically, then the parking enforcement, they have to issue them a ticket. And that's something that you guys have to decide regarding how much should you charge ticketing for that? But, but that's a necessary, um, stick that needs to be involved in this.
And what does the transaction look like? You plug the thing into your electric vehicle, but then you actually have to put in a credit card and all of that, right?
So, so you, you don't use a credit card yet? You, you have to be, actually ChargePoint, I think ChargePoint allows for using credit card or Apple Pay or a variety of options. But yeah, once you've, you're a, a member of ChargePoint, I think they might have a guest option. You would pay for it and then you would plug in. And then as long as the car, the charger sees the car plugged in and it would start charging. If it's not charging, the charger would know that the car is not charging. It would then give a grace period. And normally on the app, you get a notification saying, hey, you're plugged in. You're not charging, you're going to get, you know, hit with a fee.
And same, same story. If someone plugged in with, without intent technically to start a charging session, but to appear as though they were justified in parking there, that would be part of the enforcement.
Yeah. So this is the dilemma. Like, let's say if we wanted to be malicious, we're not going to be able to cover this scenario, but let's say someone was malicious and they had a Chevy Bolt and they drove in, they weren't a ChargePoint customer and they just drove up, they plug, they drove into the spot and they plugged in, but they weren't ChargePoint. ChargePoint wouldn't know what to do, because it's plugged in, but no one's associated with it. So in that scenario, like that's something that we would probably get an alert, like we could probably run a report from ChargePoint and say, hey, X, Y, and Z, there were, you know, this vehicle was plugged in for eight hours. It never charged. And then we would have to do some, you know, detective work. Who was plugged in? If it happens repeatedly, we would have to investigate that.
And maybe we don't need to solve problems we, until we have them, right?
Yeah.
Whole series of rules attached to events statements, but maybe that's too much overhead for day one.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I agreed. I wouldn't focus on that. I think right now, I think the bigger thing is people are going to park in the spot, not realize it's an EV spot and they need to be ticketed just to be brought aware of this issue.
Right. It's a charging station. It's not a regular preference.
I mean, there might be some sort of a protocol for the signing and striping and, I mean, might want to paint out the entire spot in some way to make clear what it is.
Yeah. A lot of the spots, uh, get spray painted with like a little EV, the word EV or the acronym EV. Um, that's probably the easiest approach, like EV only. And then the signage would have to be designed to be as clear as possible. I mean, I would then, you know, ticket, I wouldn't do a, a large amount on the ticket. But I would do a small amount just to bring awareness.
So back to the Blink versus ChargePoint, where are we on that?
Yeah. So the dilemma with Blink is A, Blink doesn't have, if we want to go for the Nicerda rebates, we can't really use Blink. And so my recommendation, Eric and I, you know, agreed with this is the recommendation is to switch over and leverage ChargePoint and their hardware. And we've gotten, you know, Eric has gotten quotes or quote on what that's going to cost to implement. So I would recommend ROI calculator. It is appropriate for ChargePoint as well. So I would go down that road of owning similar to Blink, but doing it through ChargePoint.
Better take all, Eric?
Absolutely.
All right. Sounds like that's the plan. And then the next mission is to get that going and then to give some further thought to the, to the rules of the road.
Correct. And, and, um, so just procedurally, we'll need to amend the parking codes. We'll have a local law, which obviously goes through that process to lay out those regulations. Um, I have a form of that drafted already, uh, so we can update that. And then just getting the signage, placing the order, um, but we're well on our way.
Okay. All right. So not to belabor the point, but a Blink has no interest in allowing its, uh, system to be, to take advantage of the Nicerda use?
So this is the dilemma, is that the manufacturers have to apply to Nicerda. And they have to be aware of, you know, what's involved in the process. Blink has not been aware of this. So Blink doesn't have the chargers. So, so for example, in order to get the maximum rebate, we need to have, um, four charging cables. Blink doesn't have a way to do that. So the ones that are approved by Nicerda for Blink don't have four charging cables. They have ones that have single. So what we would have to do is we'd have to buy four single chargers. None of their dual chargers do it. And so ChargePoint is definitely more in tuned with New York State regulation and has gotten approved on the Nicerda website for their dual charger. So it's one like unit with two chargers. And so that makes the ROI work.
All right. Well, I ratify all that. Anybody else?
Thanks for the work.
Yes. Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Ben Serbin. Much appreciated as always.
I'm excited as well. So it's, uh, it's all a good thing. So yes, no problem.
Uh, the lead missionary for EVs and, uh, we appreciate it.
No problem. I mean, the hope is to see more, uh, village vehicles that are EV based. So-
You mean the Villa Jones?
Yeah, that, that is correct. Yeah.
That's been pretty good at pushing for that.
Police department knows they're not buying anything else if you can't plug it in.
Ben, check out my email too. We have to meet about the grant.
Yes, I, I saw that. So, um, are there any other questions regarding the EV chargers?
Don't think so.
Okay. Cool.
Thank you for doing that.
No problem. It was a pleasure. We will be in touch.
Thank you, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
No problem. Definitely. Have a good day. Good night.
All right. Uh, next on our, this was the discussion about the Bedford, uh, Joe proposed, uh, revisions to the R2A zoning difference. So hey, Russell here at HEAT, I don't know if you had a chance to leave to know, he sent to us earlier today. But just to remind everybody and potentially for anyone who is listening, uh, this issue arose when the former Baker property at 245 Bedford Road was sold by the estate of the Bakers uh, and was subdivided into three lots. The, the big original house on a single, uh, large lot and then two parcels cleaved off, uh, on the right hand side as you face the house from Bedford Road. One on the corner and one just behind that, uh, on Clark Street. So based on our R2A zoning, which is essentially zoning that follows Bedford Road and, uh, the map tracks each, uh, property line. So it zigzags around each property. The two lots that were cleaved off from the Baker property were all part of a big lot that was R2A and the two lots that were cleaved off each acquire, uh, the zoning, uh, that the parent lot once had. So they're both, uh, uh, R2A zoning and they both permit under the current code, two family houses. So, uh, a pair of two family houses, uh, was proposed for that site. And the neighbors on Clark Street were very much concerned about that. Uh, and did not feel it was appropriate to have a two family house, uh, facing Clark Street, which is, um, in their view, a single family zone. And, uh, they believe that the R2A zoning, uh, ought not to allow that second lot, the one that no longer touches Bedford Road, still to have R2A zoning. That doesn't align with the way the law works. Zoning is a map and, and you can subdivide a given lot in any way that's legal. And all of the subdivided lots acquire the zoning of the lot they were subdivided from. So there was significant concern about that, that, um, we understand has, uh, resolved itself because the current owner has at least verbally committed to, uh, potentially building a, a two family house on the corner facing Bedford Road, but has said that he will, uh, sell the second lot in for single family use with a deed restriction that would require it, even though the underlying zoning will permit two families. At the same time, as we all know, the Girl Scout building, uh, has been on the market and that too is, uh, in the R2A zoning district currently and for many years, uh, operating as the Girl Scout building under a special use permit. But in the hypothetical that it would be purchased as subdivided for residential use, the entire property has the potential to be subdivided into, into two family homes, uh, facing Great Oak Wing. As those who watch our meetings will know, uh, former mayor Bernie Gordon, former sheriff of the planning commission, uh, who was involved in the creation of the R2A zone and the historic overlay district, reflected that we actively enact a moratorium, uh, which we have, have not yet done. Because I, I am not convinced that David's necessarily do it. Uh, but his argument was that the idea that the R2A zoning might in the end bleed into lots that faced the side streets was a different from what was intended and a failure of the original zoning not to anticipate this possibility. So we came back to, uh, BFT Planning, Susan Palate, the planners that we have used for matters of this kind, explained what had been going on, explained the concerns that had been voiced to us. And, uh, inquired to Susan and her colleagues, uh, what she thought might be appropriate. She gave us back a report, which was on our agenda last, uh, the, uh, last meeting, uh, which among other things identified the fact that there are very, very few parcels on Bedford Road where this is even a potential issue. Because there are very few parcels that could be legally subdivided under current zoning into more than one parcel. So, um, and, and even within that, the ones that have the theoretical scale to allow a subdivision- Um, and, and even within that, the ones that have the theoretical scale to allow a subdivision uh, seem highly unlikely, uh, to, to at least in the imaginable future uh, be used in that way in part because they are uh, great and beautifully restored, large over how it is all worth seven figures at this point and, and don't appear likely to be torn down for a subdivision. So, um, when push comes to shove, there are very few locations where this might be an issue. And, uh, what, uh, BFJ has given us is draft uh, wording that we are gonna need to tweak a little bit further. That would say essentially that uh, a property that is subdivided in the R two A zone may still be in the R two A zone, but it would not be legal for a two family house unless its frontage was on Bedford. In other words, in the example I started with for Clark Street, uh, the second lot in, uh, on the side of the Baker property does no, no longer touches Bedford Road. And although that is still in the R two A zoning based on our map, uh, it would not reach the requirement, uh, to allow a two family house. Um, so that was what was proposed, uh, and pretty clearly outlined. And, um, the other thing to report about that is, uh, we were back and forth a little bit. There are two issues that needed to clarify. Uh, one is at the moment, uh, a, the proposed verbage refers to the seventy five foot frontage. That's the minimum frontage required for an R two A two family house in our current code. It might very well be that the frontage of a given lot is bigger than that. And so we're thinking, and I think Susan agreed, to take the seventy five foot language out of it and simply allow the schedule one, uh, dimensions, uh, to carry the day. And then secondly, there is a, a little piece of complexity about corner lots. If you build on a corner lot, which side is the frontage? In other words, certainly we had that issue when that uh, house was subdivided on the corner of Ashland and Bedford, or in the village board issue with a site plan issue uh, to identify, uh, what the front of the house is and which side it faces. Uh, in the hypothetical per Bernie Gordon's comments, that the purpose of the R two A zone was to permit uh, and possibly to encourage two family homes facing Bedford Road. Seems like we need to add a little bit of clarity to that.
That not determined by others?
If, if, well, if you build on a corner lot in our current code, you have the choice of which way you want the house to face. Uh, so for example, the house that is built on the corner of Ashland could have been a Bedford Road facing house. In the end, they chose an Ashland facing house. That parcel, obviously, that's an limitations, uh, that being, uh, quite a bit more frontage on Ashland than, um, on Bedford. But there are also some issues that are given property owner might use to, but they're advantaged, one way or the other, based on zoning. So. So Peter Russell, you're, you're welcome to comment here. Here's what I would say. You sent us, uh, a, a note expressing a, a concern and one that we've talked about here about the idea that in, in the current environment with the need for more and more flexible housing, the idea of limiting two family houses, you know, under the current, in a way to limit them further than the current code seems like it might be stacking in, in a direction that's opposite to that philosophical goal. So what I would say in my colleagues and comment is that they feel appropriate. Um, what we've proposed here is, is in response to the very, 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 very vigorous concerns of neighbors on Clark Street and, uh, also the very, very, very vigorous concerns of former mayor, uh, Bernie Gordon. I do not think that this change has uh, a particularly significant effect. It's clearly had the potential to affect what might happen at the Girl Scout building. But again, we're talking about a very small number of potential units, uh, being eliminated if we didn't make this change. So you wanna add to that in any way?
I'd like to please.
You're, you're being grabbed from the howl here. So.
I look at this stuff.
It follows you. So.
Okay.
Say what, say what you would.
Uh, thank you for that, uh, summary of the history and the, uh, the concerns that led to the proposal. Uh, I do have a concern and I would, I would say it's a vigorous one since you use that word several times. That, uh, this kind of proposal not lead to kind of a demonization of two family housing. There's not that much two family housing, a zone in the village. As you know, it's mostly a single family. There's some multifamily. But, um, I, I just see this as a, as a signaling a problem where there's really not much of a problem. The two lots that have been discussed, uh, are a small fragment of the street front on the two streets concerned, the two side streets, Clark and, um, it's great oak. Um, and I would just be, uh, concerned that, uh, this kind of reinforces the notion that two family housing is not welcome here. And I think that would be a mistake because, um, two family housing and multifamily housing have great social benefit for the village. And, uh, making it possible for a range of people to live here who come as newcomers or downsizing or maybe students. Um, and, uh, so, uh, thank you for, uh, hearing my comments.
So let me just say, again, speaking for myself, um, uh, I, I agree with most everything you said. We're, we're clearly grappling with uh, the philosophical issue of how we address an environment where property values are, at least for the moment, on a sort of runaway path to escalating. Uh, homeownership for many is getting further and further and further away and, and homes that were already expensive have lately been fabulously expensive. Whether that continues for long haul is, is anybody's guess, but what it clearly has done, uh, and it's, it's a process been going on for a couple of decades. Not, not necessarily for any particular intervention, just the way the world has evolved is that plus it was going to be a more expensive, uh, place to live than it was certainly a generation ago. I will say in, 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 in uh, our favor, I think that the community and, and this board have been pretty proactive about adding new multi-family housing. Obviously, we see quite a bit of activity downtown. That's not something that everybody has been happy about. Uh, and, uh, obviously at a market rate, uh, that doesn't produce a high level of affordability. But we have a ten percent set aside for all of those, uh, new construction. So if just for example, Toll Brothers on Russian Avenue, good example, sixty eight townhomes, seven of them uh, affordable homeownership, all of which are now closed and happy to report tenants, uh, owners in every one of them. And then, um, you know, these apartment buildings that are going up downtown, which are all rental, will have ten percent of their units, uh, described as affordable as well. One of the, the issues that exists about two family houses is that unless you had some further intervention, they're basically market rate. And for example, new construction of a two family home hypothetically on Clark Street is, uh, gonna create a new opportunity for folks you described perhaps empty nesters or downsizers or whatever. It isn't gonna create affordable housing.
Can I just make one comment on that here? Um, two family houses can be an opportunity for families who have a little bit of wealth, make an investment and then have a rental property. So it's, 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 it's a wealth building opportunity for some people, um, beyond single family ownership.
No doubt. And indeed, anecdotally, uh, uh, you know, one of the potential, uh, developers of two family in that zone, I think envisioned like the owning them himself would have thought it would be that the property is probably a place where his family members could live where it might be. So, I mean, the issue on Clark Street has, uh, uh, changed simply because the owner of those two lots has affirmatively reported that we will not uh, sell the second lot in for two family use and thereby addressed, I think, the concerns of the neighbors on Clark Street. If we were to pass the proposed, uh, change to the R two A zoning that's being discussed right now, that would ratify that in the zoning code. But it'd be ratified something that's already happened. So so far as I know, the only other parcel in play about this is the Girl Scout parcel. And, um, there's a, a draft proposal, just a sort of preliminary discussion with the planning commission occurring on Wednesday night. Um, from someone who is, um, proposing, uh, to build two, two family houses on fronting on Bedford Road and then four single family houses fronting on a Great Oak Link. So, um, again, that proposal, as, as we understand it at the moment, uh, would not only comport to what, uh, Bernie sought in terms of land uses. Perhaps he would have other issues, um, but it would also be compliant with this change if we made it. So obviously there's a complex interplay between what properties cost, who wants to buy them, what it costs to develop them, uh, and, and what they might sell for or rent for. But, um, there isn't any question that the conversation about, uh, multifamily, uh, dwellings and accessory dwelling units, which has been going on statewide and regionally and nationally, uh, is, is coming, uh, to a head in the next year, two years, three years, as, as you will know, we've had this conversation. I will say that, but those credit, we have a pretty high percentage of multifamily housing. Um, it's just interesting to think about the context in which that all happened and what people thought about it at the times that it occurred. You know, three very large guard department complexes that were built in the forties, fifties, sixties. Uh, it's interesting to think what the conversation was there.
I think, uh, President could be applauded for having that, that dimension and for encouraging through its, uh, its law to be allocations of affordable housing in all of these new developments. That, that's great. Um, I, I'll just narrow my focus to the, uh, situation with the two families. Because, um, as I understand the, uh, the zoning for the Bedford Road corridor is houses can be either single family or two family.
That is right.
One of the phenomena you see in wealthy areas is that two family ho- homes are converted to single family. That's not unusual at all. So you could see and you could be encouraging inadvertently that kind of shrinkage of the two family dimension here.
Why do you say we'd be encouraging?
Um, I, I just think the way this, this, uh, as I understand that this discussion has evolved in the village is, it has, uh, cast a cloud over the notion of two family housing and that's part of what I'm protesting. I, I think that's unfortunate.
And, and I, I would be kind of agree with you, which isn't to diminish the sincerity of, of the people who have concerns about it. But I, I also believe that, um, it changes incremental, obviously. And, uh, we will, I, I don't see this potential change as as subjecting to people that we wish that multifamily properties on Bedford Road, of which there are many, ought to be restored to single family use, although obviously there is the possibility that that might happen. Certainly the, the group home that, that once existed, uh, uh, near the old rec center is now being converted to single family use uh, largely because the institutional owner decided no longer to operate it and sold it. But we have a lot of apartments, uh, up and down Bedford Road, all the way from the old village down to, down to, uh.
Yeah. Thank, thank goodness for that.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm, I'm not trying to, to make it a bigger issue than it is, but, um, thank you for, for hearing me out on that. And, uh, I do, uh, think it's great that the village, when it can, helps diversify the range of housing choices that are here.
Yeah.
And I, I totally support. So I, I appreciate your comments and, and I largely agree with them. But we are also aiming to be respectful of, of, uh, folks like Bernie who had a role in the creation of this. Uh, and, and folks on Clark Street, for example, who felt pretty much unanimously uh, had some concerns about this. I, I will say that I think the conversation has uh, been useful from the standpoint of the conversations that clearly will be had in the coming years over how that all looks, including, as you know, the possibility of the state, as was proposed in last year's budget, may simply override locals zoning in some ways about accessory dwelling units and normal big family housing. And so, um, in the category of a community that I think that can be, can be a complimented, as you already said, or it's a general desire to do the right thing, not always, uh, as vast or as expansively as perhaps a lot of us would like. The needle is moving in the right direction. Um, but I'm also respectful of people's concerns about their specific neighborhood and what might, might happen in that location. It's just so interesting to me that there are lots of concern about the development of the Girl Scout, uh, uh, some of which is simply related to the fact that something that's been kind of an anchor of that neighborhood for the last twenty or thirty years in one use is about to be something different, whether it's in that building or not. And that obviously is cause for a change for lots of.
Change. So we have to be ready to deal with.
Exactly.
I mean, I do think it's important if, you know, if the actual developments on these two properties in particular don't change the neighborhood's desire for this zoning change, that we have a vigorous debate about this, because I think you're bringing up really important points. And I think the people who are saying this will ruin our neighborhood or whatever, need to hear them. And, you know, whether that changes their opinion or not, I think this is the kind of dialogue that we have to have in this community is saying, well, you know, we, i- i- if Westchester County is not a place where our parents can live, where our children can live, where people who work in our shops and our businesses can live, then it will be unaffordable for everyone. And, um, and we have to find ways to move on.
So Susan Pavate, our planner from BFJ is online and has raised her hand originally. Are you there, Susan?
I'm here. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to, to respond to the, the gentleman and I'm sorry I didn't catch your name from the public who is there. Um, because I, I completely agree with, with what you're saying as well. And, and what we understood our charge to be in this analysis was not to in any way limit the, the use of a two family home, you know, not to diminish that as a possibility, because this is, as you noted, one of the few zones where it is allowed, uh, as a single and two family zone. And so, you know, we did look at various zoning approaches, including, you know, changing the minimum lot size for two family homes, changing, changing the minimum lot width. Um, but those would have had the effect of, of minimizing the potential for two family homes. Um, with this pretty minor change on, on the frontage on Bedford Road, there are basically three lots apart from the one that the mayor mentioned that was sort of the genesis of this on the corner of Clark Street. Um, but the other three lots that there are potential, uh, for two family development, there are two that are currently developed with, you know, very large, single family homes. Um, those would still be developable, uh, with two family homes under the proposed zoning. Now, I think as the mayor mentioned, there's, there's economic reasons why we think that's probably unlikely, but they would still be, they would still have that potential because they front Bedford Road. So really that the main change here is on the Girl Scout property where under the current zoning, based on our analysis, you could get two, two family homes fronting Bedford. And then behind Bedford on the side street, which I think is great, Great Oak. Um, you could either get two, two more two family homes fronting the side street or four single family homes. So with the change that's proposed, the only difference would be that you wouldn't be able to get those two family homes on, on the side street. Those would need to be single family. So we're talking about basically the potential for two, you know, two, two family homes that would be, um, you know, changed here that, that have the impact. Um, I think you're absolutely right that, you know, that this is, is and should remain available for, for two family development. Bedford Road makes sense for two family homes as well as single family and multifamily a- as exists now. Um, so that was really kind of our narrow focus. Um, again, not to change the overall use of, of the district, but to just try to mitigate the character and then the, um, you know, the scale of development and, and the way that it is situated to protect those, um, single family neighborhoods along the side streets.
Susan, so in the specific circumstance of the Girl Scout property, the as of right development is actually the same number of units, right? Four single or two double?
Correct.
Uh, facing Great Oak Link.
Yeah.
And, and the game being there, our, our zoning code requires more, a, a bigger lot for a two family than for a, a one. So.
That's correct.
All right. Anything further to add to any of that? Thank you, Peter Russell.
Thank you.
Oh, hi, Peter. It's you.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Susan.
Thank you all.
And, uh, you gave a proposal which will be chatting about, maybe to get back to, uh, to take a look at the uh, historic overlay district. historic overlay district and possibly adjust that to give a greater clarity.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you a lot. We'll relieve you of your burdens. Or at least our burdens of yours. Last up, Mike Newman is on with a report about the need to face the tree on the Tree Island at Mandel Road and so I hope you ever have a chance to read the memo. So Mike, you're there, Mike?
I'm here. How are you guys?
Hi, Mike.
So the, the plan is sometime in August to, to cut down the tree.
Yeah, so, so the plan would be, you know, a- after doing the reports and making sure that everything would be all set to plant a new tree, the plan would be to start taking it down in the near future. Mario and the guys are going to start taking the lights off if they haven't done it, started today. I'm not sure. I wasn't in today, but we're going to start taking the lights off that are on there. And then we will take it down, start prepping the site. And then the plan would be to, to plant late September, early August. It'll depend on the weather and when we can get it from the nursery. And we're looking at, you know, between an 18 and 20, 25 foot Norway spruce. And Norway spruce was originally there. I think that, you know, replacing in kind. And then also I think it, it, it it looks most like a holiday tree, which, you know, we do use it for our holiday event. When we do plant, we are going to have a little ceremony. So I will coordinate with everyone when we have a planting ceremony. That, that coincides with the grant we applied for. And hopefully we receive that. I believe it would be about a thousand dollars that could go towards the purchase of the tree.
So can I ask, I, I know on some of the park projects I've worked on in a completely different context in my day job. And this probably is at the fancier end of things. Landscape architects will literally go to a nursery to pick out the tree they think is best suited. Have we identified where to get it? And are there any choices to be made? And would it be worth the expense of having Wagner Hodgson, for example, advise on which tree? I say that simply, I, I can kind of report that in a few examples, in years past, we've gotten street trees that in the end, arborists types have said, well, you shouldn't have helped them to give you that tree because of whatever bifurcated trunk or something the rest of us aren't all that conscious of.
I'm sorry. I was going to say if we were going to hire somebody, I would hire an arborist rather than an athlete like Ryan. I mean, I'm sure they.
We, we can consult, you know, we have an arborist that we do use. We can consult and see if he would want to, could help us out in picking one out. Either way, we'll have to get multiple quotes because I envision it falling into that category where we'll need to get some quotes for it based on the price.
The new tree is going to be what, give or take?
Two thousand, twenty-five hundred.
And is it going to be, you said 18 to 25 feet. How tall is it?
Current tree is about 60.
Well, th- this could be one-third the height. And then it grows, it grows a couple of feet a year?
It, it can grow, you know, depending on the year, but about a foot a year, you know, give or take.
Yeah, if I read your email correctly, it could reach its full growth anywhere between seven and 40 years from now.
Right.
In general, I mean, the tricky thing with trees, right, is if you plant one that's too big, it's likely that its survival is smaller than it may.
Right. Going, going with a more mature tree would be, you know, great, and you know, but the, the worry, you know, in, in planting any tree, but especially a more mature tree and a taller tree, one is how, how, will it be able to handle the transport? And you know, we're, we're probably adding an additional expense if we go much bigger where we may need, you know, a crane to help us plant it.
Where are you getting the grant from? I'm curious.
Um, uh, Tree City, I believe. I'm sorry. I don't have that in front of me.
All right. Well, so that, that sounds good. And in our latest monthly update, we already messaged out that this was in the wind. I think the idea of a ceremony is great. And we should, you know, find some way to engage families and kids.
Yeah, what we were talking about doing is buying one of those like large, like novelty, like yardsticks, put it out in front of the tree, especially during the holiday sing. And families can take pictures and something we could do over the years and see their kids grow with the tree growing.
That's nice.
That's good. So years and years ago, when the Great Oak that was on the corner of Great Oak Lane and Bedford was destroyed in a storm and a new one was planted that has since departed, but during the Ragamuffin Parade, there was a little opportunity for kids to scoop a Dixie cup of dirt and toss it in. So they were still participating in the planting. I don't know if that's obviously the tree had largely already been planted. It was just sort of topping it off, but I don't know if that's of interest or not. So.
Yeah, I haven't thought, I haven't thought too much about the ceremony just yet, but that's not a bad idea. Maybe we'll talk with the school, see if they want to bring a group down and, you know.
This might be before school starts, right?
Uh, depends, depends on the weather, really.
All right. And then you're geared up to give it whatever watering it needs.
Yes. And we'll, we'll also come in and do some treatments on it each year, like we do with a couple of trees in the plaza.
Okay. So we knew this was coming. It's a, it's a sad day to cut it down, but a lot less sad than if it fell over, which it appears to be a risk of doing. So.
Yeah, I feel like we're getting closer and closer to that point.
All right.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. That was the last of our regular agenda items.
We learned, by the way, during the, the birthday tree planting, that Jews have a little bit of a diversion to putting dirt in a hole for something that's growing because we do it at the end of life when somebody has passed. So.
Okay. So I mean, it's such that folks who felt that we just wouldn't participate would be.
My wife would not put a shovel on there.
But not offended by the ceremony.
Not offended by the ceremony, just it's not a.
Okay.
Just one of the things that you do.
Right. Understandably. All right. Finished with our regular work session? Here we go. Good evening. Welcome to the Village Board meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, July 25. We are experimenting with our automated owl here so that the meeting is being recorded via Zoom and will be available within a few days on PC TV at PCTV76.org. And you can, as always, pick up the Zoom link for this meeting, as well as for many other kinds of meetings that we have at Pleasantville-NY.gov. And we envision not only for the moment where the COVID, COVID rules still prevail about the open meetings law, but also going forward, even though we're meeting in person and folks are welcome to come here to ADVR Avenue, but we also encourage folks to log in if they so choose via Zoom and participate from home. So I had a, a few announcements to make. And the first, maybe I'll just piggyback right on top of what we just described in work session with Mike Newman, our superintendent of Parks and Recreation. So the tree that's at the Tree Island at Mandel Road and Amy Wood is leaning evermore. And it is, has been checked out by an arborist who, who has confirmed that the tree is basically an end of life. We've known this was coming for a while and have obviously tried to save and support a tree that has had this iconic role in Pleasantville. We're at the point where it has to be cut down. We're planning to do that in the end of August. Mike has been working to hatch a plant, to buy a new tree, which will be a Norway spruce like the one we have now. It will likely be about a third the height of the current tree, something in the range of 18 to 25 feet, depending on which specimen we get. That feels like the most realistic size that can be reasonably transplanted and, and take root here in Pleasantville. And by Mike's report, those trees typically grow one to two feet a year. And so it will take a while to achieve the height of the one we're losing. But Mike's also working on the idea of a ceremony of some kind to honor the old tree, but to welcome the new arrival, which will be truly vertical instead of not quite vertical. So. More on that soon. We also had a conversation with Ben Serikin, who's been helping us out with our electric vehicle charging station plan, moving towards a, a setup where there would be the opportunity for four vehicles to plug in at Memorial Plaza right near the gazebo. Jack, the kind of the moment, we've got the service there now figuring out what devices we should get and what system we should use for them. But a little hard at this point, Eric, am I correct in saying, hard to predict when they'll be up and running?
Yes, we need to pass a ordinance and the machines are likely not in stock and have a bit of a hot time as well.
Okay. And, and while, while we're at it, as we have reported in the past, and, and many of you have already noticed, we've established some different partner rules in Memorial Plaza to allow transient parking on the permit side weekdays after 10:00 AM, paying at the pay station, but also to provide pay station parking on Saturdays, which previously had been free on the commuter side. The latter decision largely made because that lot was standing up with quite a few cars in it that were just there all weekend and they were in the way of our downtown business or restaurants and our farm markets. So pay station, as you perhaps have already seen, has been put up in a little PS over the direction of the railroad, but another one is coming over by the gazebo. Within the next month, we think?
Yeah, within the next month.
So you could then pay at either one and, and let me also report that folks can sign up for the Pendle app. Every parking meter has a sticker on it that shows you how both the iPhone App Store and the Android App Store have Pendle app available and you can download it, set up an account and makes it pretty easy to buy parking downtown based on the zone you're in and pay for it. And if the rules permit you to extend, to extend by your phone, it starts a timer and reminds you a few minutes before the expiration of your time. It's a pretty convenient app. I will say a bunch of people have commented that the app works fine, but the cell signal doesn't. Folks literally in the Memorial Plaza lot having a hard time getting response from the server because they're having trouble with their cell service. That is a, a big and complicated problem in lots of places, but largely driven by the fact that cell capacity in this zone, which was once pretty good, is now strained by the fact that so many people are online at once and there's so much video streaming and the like. Michael Pepper has put forward with a, a couple of research efforts to see whether there's something government like ours, government at our scale can do to try to incentivize investment in more capacity. And there clearly may be some opportunities. Among the problems that exist is if more cell capacity is created, it means more equipment somewhere and the question is where. And, and whether the folks who are, live or work near that cell equipment are sympathetic to the project. That's been a problem in lots of places, but clearly cell service at this point is at a, a central utility in a way that it wasn't even 10 years ago with so many people depending on it, lots of stuff, and so many people having given up landlines. So just to be clear, we're well aware of the problem. Don't have our hands on the tiller to steer the boat of cell service. It's a private industry and a private investment, but there may be some things we can do when they're looking at them, as are other communities at the same time. So that said, I can tell you that I use the Pendle app. I have had pretty good success with it. So I would encourage you to take, take a shot at it because it does make paying for parking downtown Pleasantville, anywhere in downtown Pleasantville, not just Memorial Plaza, pretty easy so long as you have a cell signal. Other thing I wanted to mention that we discussed in work session is, as perhaps some of you know, there has been concern about the idea that big properties in the Bedford Road R2A zone could be subdivided and would produce as of right, two-family homes on the side streets. And it has been the view of, of some neighbors as well as former member Bernie Gordon, who was a part of the discussion and the creation of the original overlay district, that the intent was to permit and perhaps encourage two-family and multi-family housing in various places facing Bedford Road. But it had not envisioned that when a subdivided property didn't face Bedford Road, that it would acquire the same rights. So we've been looking at a proposed tweak the zoning code that would simply say in the R2A district, the right to have a two-family home consistent with the other parts of the zoning code, which wouldn't change, requires frontage on Bedford Road and that the property was subdivided still in the R2A zone. If it didn't have frontage on Bedford Road, it wouldn't qualify. So that's the discussion we're having. And I think moving forward, had a chat with Susan today about some minor tweaks to the rather simple language. And I think it reasonably likely that we'll have that for discussion and hopefully we'll probably be able to revise for the zoning code. Part of that conversation has been triggered by what lots of us are already aware of, which is that the Girl Scout property on the corner of Great Oak Lane and Bedford Road has been on the market for a while. The Girl Scouts have moved out and the property is up for sale. As I think I may have reported at, at some point in the past, I went to the property along with Eric Morrissey, Tina DeSauv, the superintendent of schools, and John Chow, the assistant superintendent for business affairs of the school district. The four of us toured the Girl Scout building with the real estate agent largely to identify whether there was any realistic possibility that the property would make sense for the village, for the school district, or for some joint venture by the tools. You're probably aware, the property was on the market and it remains to our knowledge on the market at two point something hundred dollars. Whether that would be the final purchase price is not clear, but the building needs a tremendous amount of work. I think that is important. The reason the Girl Scouts have decided that it was no longer suited for their needs. It needs roof. It needs windows. It needs APAC. It has no elevator. It has no air conditioning, plumbing, electrical, asbestos abatement. The list goes on. School district, in an effort to make sure they had done the due diligence for a potential school use, asked their architect to take a look at the building and to put together a rough budget for what it might cost to renovate the building in a manner suited for school use. And that would obviously include all the updates to life safety equipment as well as ADA equipment, elevator, all that kind of stuff. The numbers came back that between the renovation price and the purchase price, it was likely an eight or nine possible, even a ten to the dollar price. Tina DeSauv, the superintendent of schools, commented on this at the school board's meeting last week. If you wanted to catch that section of it, it's in her report from the school board meeting, which took place in the hook up if you didn't get that. It was of interest to folks. It was on, it was the week before last, Tuesday, the 12th. So she commented on that. They had backed the report from their architect, which essentially made clear that the purchase and renovation of the building was a very, very expensive proposition. That same issue prevails for us. I can report that there is no possibility that the village could acquire that building for a rec center. It'd be great to have. It would be great to have the gym. It would be likely the largest capital project we have ever undertaken. And it would eliminate a whole bunch of all the things at a time when we're talking about replacing the pool and doing things of that kind. So amid the sense that I share with the community that there is an opportunity there, that opportunity comes with a price tag that would produce a very, very steep hike in taxes. And one which I think is just unsustainable at the moment. I think the school district feels the same way, especially when benefits are nice to have, but certainly not need to have. So there you have it. That's the status of the Girl Scout building and There you have it. That's the status uh of the Girl Scout building and uh we await um the. Uh private sector's response to what may be possible there. Anybody want anything to that? Um then let me just make sure I haven't missed anything else I wanted to say. Um let me uh reiterate something I said uh last week, and that was. Uh we had a really, really successful uh. Return to the field uh of the Pleasantville Music Festival after having not had one for two years, essentially a. A three-year gap. Uh and uh a big shout out to so many people who helped in so many ways, including the folks who are sitting here, Eric and. And Alyssa, but uh especially to Bruce Figer, our. Assistant Director of the Festival. Uh I I can tell you from a very, very direct personal experience, it is a life-consuming venture, especially in the last couple of months. Uh and uh Bruce has done a great job of course, and. Lastly, I I want to give a shout out to Northwell Health, uh which stepped right up and uh. Uh accepted the opportunity to become the presenting sponsor, our lead sponsor at a music festival, Northwell Health. Uh owns and operates both Phelps, uh House Billings, City Hall, and Northern West Church in Disco. Can't think of a more appropriate lead sponsor, uh and uh just want to say once again, thank you to Northwell Health for. Making possible a great day for the village of Pleasantville and its environs uh right here in the center, right here up there, so. Eric, you want to comment on our Mandville Road project and its status and its likely schedule?
Sure, so um we are waiting on the Department of Transportation to issue what's known as a highway work permit. Uh there was one item remaining that the contractor delivered on Monday, on Friday. So we uh have every indication that that work permit would be um. Uh given to the contractor and the village this week at some point, so. From there, we have a uh pre-construction meeting with D O T, our contractor, the village, um and then work can commence, so. Uh we are inching closer to having a defined construction uh starting. Um and presumably uh that could take place maybe uh August or early September at this point.
All right, so uh when that happens, apparently there'll be some uh disruption in various ways along Mandville Road and at that end at Memorial Plaza. Uh but um. Uh we uh look forward to this long-awaited project being kicked off and look forward to the chance to uh. Send an invoice to the state to get the one point seven million that they will owe us to uh most to compensate us in grand money, so. All right, any other comments, questions, announcements? Is there any comment from any member of the public? There being none in the room? Anybody online? Raise your hand if you have something to say on any section. All right, no takers on that. Uh let's go to. Our agenda items, let me show on my screen. All right, two fourteen, Mr. Paul.
I read the agenda. Right?
Congratulations, two fourteen.
Oh, okay.
Want to check?
There is a line out. Thank you. Uh result of the Board of Trustees hereby approves the amendments of the regular meeting held on July eleventh, two thousand twenty two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections to the minutes? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Two fifteen, Nicole.
Resolve with the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments effective five thirty one twenty two for fiscal year ending in twenty twenty two as listed below. Increase revenue and expense in general fund, five thousand dollars, grants, state aid. Uh for my certa is transferred to special purpose clean energy rebate program. That's for the. Uh lead Lauren Longmore weaving program. Uh increase revenue and expense capital fund, fifteen thousand, three hundred and forty six dollars and seventy five cents. Uh sidewalk program fifty fifty uh to sidewalk reconstruction fiscal year ending in twenty twenty two.
Second, second, comments or questions? One favor, I.
Hi.
Two sixteen, David.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year ending twenty twenty three as listed below. From the general fund ninety nine fifty from uh contingent account nineteen ninety four hundred. To uh count sixteen twenty two hundred village hall equipment. Five thousand dollars from a nineteen ninety dot four hundred contingent to. A ninety nine fifty dot nine oh one transfer to capital. And increase in revenue expense capital fund, five thousand dollars from interfund transfer from. General fund to the Mandville Road Order Projects local funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approved two seventeen.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the aspect of payment claims dated July two thousand twenty two to the fiscal year two thousand twenty three covering check numbers from one zero four four five nine. To one zero four six zero zero. General fund, three hundred eighty six thousand, five hundred forty four and sixty three cents. Water fund, twenty three thousand, seven hundred three and seventy five cents. Capital bond, eight thousand, six hundred sixty nine and eighty seven cents. Fuse bond, sixteen thousand, two hundred fifty one and sixty two cents. For a total of four hundred thirty five thousand, one hundred sixty nine and eighty seven cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions on the claims? All in favor?
Hi.
I'm with the three two and two.
Resolve with the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the resignation retirement. From Superintendent of Public Works, Diligent Engineer Jeff Theo Kahn, effective October eighth, twenty twenty two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jeff's retirement letter is attached, uh. Uh a bittersweet occasion, uh. We always knew that uh Jeff would retire on us uh at some point and uh. Uh clearly we'll miss him in many, many, many ways. Uh more on that as his retirement rate approaches, but. Uh and you, Jeff, for uh. The very, very good work you've done now, and you leave the village um infrastructure better than you found it. Uh I appreciate your service. Here, all in favor? I, I would approve two nineteen.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby accepts a donation in the amount of two thousand, seven hundred and ninety five dollars for the purchase and installation of a park bench from Steve Munter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. Steve is a uh a great, great, wonderful figure, and uh we very, very much appreciate this. I don't know. A donation service of this memorial bench, all in favor? I, I have approved. Two twenty four.
Well, this one, we can uh. Read what's just a now therefore be a result and refer to uh. Refer to the resolution.
Okay, so I have to read the amount?
Yeah, yeah, just do the now therefore and then reference the uh amounts.
Okay, and the rest of the stuff on the top as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Skip it.
And then the ones that could be a further result as well?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Whereas the presently pending. Where they are presently pending for New York State Supreme Court County Watch District Series of Tax Surgitory Proceedings titled. Um manager of Gallaudet.
Matter of.
Oh matters. Matter of Gallaudet Court versus successor of the Village of Pleasantville at all. Supreme Court West Co. Index five four one sixteen dash eighteen, C. And whereas these proceedings challenge a real property tax assessment of property located in four twenty seven Mandville Road. Which is identified as section one oh six point five, block two, lot sixty eight on the tax map of the Village of Pleasantville and. Whereas these proceedings challenge the assessments of the tax parcel established by the Village of Pleasantville. In the assessment years of two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty two. And whereas proposed terms of settlement have been reached, providing a disposition of the claims asserted in these proceedings. And whereas the Village Board Trustees has obtained the advice and assistance of its counsel, Keenan Bean. P C with respect to both terms of settlement and duly considered the same. And whereas pursuant to these terms of settlement, two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty two assessments of tax parcels involved in these proceedings. Will be reduced, and whereas. As a result, the Village of Pleasantville tax refund will be due in an amount equal to approximately five thousand, five hundred eighty nine and seventy six cents. Uh dollars. And whereas outstanding two thousand twenty three village taxes, second installment. Livered upon, the parcel will be reduced in the approximate amount of one thousand, one hundred forty nine and thirteen cents. Now, therefore, be a result that the Village of. Order Trustees authorizes the settlement of these proceedings so as to adjust the annual village assessment. Of the affirmation tax parcel assessment years two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty two as followed, which is cited here in the resolution. Be a further resolve that the village administration and claim being conce as the attorneys for the Village of Pleasantville. Are hereby authorized to take the steps necessary to effectuate these terms, including execution and an entry of consent judgment.
Is there a second?
Second.
So as is clear from what Paul read, uh this has been a tax challenge that's been going on for a while. Uh we assume to report and again, gain the settlement. Uh between the parties. That also involves. Uh the insights offered by uh our inspector Lloyd Tesh uh and uh consultation as well with uh. Comments, questions? All in favor? I motion approve two twenty one.
Whereas the property owner of fifteen Memorial Plaza, fifteen Memorial LLC seeks to remove a two thousand gallon steel underground storage tank located on the property that is approximately. Sixty four inches in diameter and twelve feet in length. And whereas fifteen Memorial Plaza LLC wishes to enter into a license agreement with the village to. Access and use adjacent property owned by the village to remove the existing oil tank. Now therefore be a result that the Village Board of Trustees authorizes the mayor or village administrator to execute a license agreement attached here to. With fifty Memorial Plaza LLC for use and access to adjacent village property. For the removal of an existing underground oil tank on the license and agreement are attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric, uh is there any to think that there may be soil contamination around this thing?
Um they have not had any indication of that. They've they've done some preliminary testing that that shows that it's clean. It's also rock. Um so if we see uh some regulations pertaining to that, if there there is. Um but at this point, they believe it to be one day job.
Okay, so that's. All right, comments, questions? All in favor?
Hi.
I approve two twenty two.
Whereas licensee licensee tenant of eleven Wheeler Avenue, forty one Wheeler Avenue LLC is seeking to install a semi-permanent wood patio. Within the village right of way known as Jackson Alley to ride outdoor seating for a restaurant known as Fat Root. And whereas licensee tenant is prepared to submit architectural drawings entitled Fat Root New Patio. Prepared by Gallon Dealer Design Studio, P L L C, which drawings are attached hereto as exhibit A and. Whereas the licensee license agreement attached hereto sets forth the rights and obligations of the village and the licensee owner. And licensee tenant in connection with respect to the project. And the construction and use of a semi-permanent wood patio within the village right of way known as Jackson Alley. Now therefore be resolved that the Village Board of Trustees authorizes the mayor or village administrator. To execute a license agreement attached hereto with Arkham Holding Corp. and forty one Rest Wheeler Avenue LLC. To install a semi-permanent outdoor wood patio in Jackson Alley for use by Fat Root Restaurant.
Is there a second?
Second.
So uh this has been a discussion that's uh been ongoing for a little bit as uh. The operators at Fat Root have been looking to create a uh nice uh. Seating area with some more creature comforts on Memorial Plaza that would even be appropriate in a. In uh real weather, and they have come up with a very nice design. It has been massed in various ways. Uh working with Rock View, working with the A R B, making certain that the. Uh the tables that Miyabi puts out in Jackson Alley will still be viable and. Uh they presented to us at our last meeting and um. We are uh pleased by their proposal to invest in this uh improvement. Anything to add to that, Eric?
Um once that license agreement is executed, uh we do charge an annual fee for use of our property. Um and we can get underway.
Okay, comments, questions? All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approve two twenty three, back to you, Paul.
Intentional Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville shall hold public hearing concerning introductory law. Uh six of two thousand twenty two on August eighth, two thousand twenty two at eight P M of Village Hall, eighty Wheeler Avenue, Pleasantville, New York is considered introductory. Local law six of two thousand twenty two regarding parking restriction on Giant Street between Grandview Avenue and Academy Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
So that section is still called Giant Street?
That's right. So when we were looking into this code, um there was um uh confusion with the language, so the village attorney went went ahead and just um. Uh freshened it up. That's why you see some of the other regulations in that local law, so they're existing. But weren't really called out correctly within our code.
So so the the this location is on the opposite side of Mandville Road from Becker Road.
Correct.
Across the street in Block A.
That's right.
Uh a location there where that uh L-shaped loop. Uh between Grandview and Academy is is a prominent parking spot and.
So it's reaffirming the regulation and adding uh a section.
Why, why is that called Giant Street?
Um because if you look on maps. It refers to a dead end on Giant Street that really doesn't exist in the code.
I would have thought it was a loop of Academy. Of course, there's a little stuff that goes up. If you want, whatever, yeah, this has been vetted, right?
With the village attorney.
Correct. Okay, all right, and if there's any quirk about that, where the agent could also obviously be addressed. Uh so what is proposed here is uh uh limited by in various ways. Uh we have a proposed public hearing on August eighth at eight P M at current at current of the meeting, that's right. All in favor?
I.
I. Motion approved two twenty four.
Resolve the Board of Trustees authorizes the village administrator to execute the grant distribution agreement with. Dasny, D A S N Y, in the amount of two thousand dollars for the.
Two hundred thousand.
I'm sorry, two hundred thousand dollars for the repaving of Opera Street.
Don't get that right, you're like a hundred ninety.
I was thinking that we still need to, but I don't think the police ever looked into the issue with that parking space on Mandville. You know, near the intersection of Great Oak Lane.
Okay.
Call up on that.
Okay.
I mean, it's not still.
Is there a second on rotation two thirty four? Uh this is donor authority authority uh. Of New York State, which manages these grants. This came to us through the efforts of the Senator Ben Avanati and Senator Hark. That's right. All in favor? I have. Motion approved. Two twenty five.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following revised stipends for services performed in support of the twenty twenty two Pleasantville Music Festival. Do we need to say all the role? I used to name, sorry, as reported, as reported in the report below.
Is there a second?
Okay.
So um.
Shout out to Zero Waste, by the way.
Shout out to Zero Waste.
Yeah, that's one of the. Great things that our volunteers do.
Comments or questions? All in favor? I, I would approve. Let me just say. I was there late at night as Zero Waste was completing uh to clean up on some stuff that had been left in the field, and someone says, oh my God, look at this, this is full pork. I love this. Why didn't someone eat this? How could they not have eaten on it? I said, I feel like I'm watching a crime show. Determining. Determining what someone. All right, uh. Two twenty six, do we vote on that? Did we vote on it? We did, didn't we? Two twenty five, we voted, thank you. Thank you, two twenty six.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the application of seventy five Cooley Street Restaurant Holding Group. Chatterbox for a cabaret license at seventy five Cooley Street.
Is there a second? Second. And the license uh application is rejected. Comments, questions? I think you're in the curio theme script there, so.
Yeah, what is it? What is that? I'm I'm not.
So in order to have uh a certain kinds of musical events, you need a cabaret license. Which uh is a pretty straightforward process, some people. You know, as 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 you likely already know, sometimes uh music events in various places produce noise complaints and so. That gets addressed in in a different context.
Okay. That makes sense. Cause I know that that was something that I did see in general, people were asking that. It got loudly, so they have a license to do that.
Yeah, that, that, that cabaret license does not give you the right to exceed the noise, noise audience. It simply gives you the right to have organized music.
Correct. Live music or, or more than background music.
There's a very complicated history in New York State of prohibitions against dancing and different things in particular.
Then why do you happen to know that, trustee?
Very nice. Since I have the history of dancing, actually.
So, so far our constituents, this means that they have the license to have music, however, not to exceed nicely.
Correct. Correct.
Zero can't go.
No aspect of a cabaret license, uh, is licensed to exceed the noise audience. And in a circumstance where somebody that has a cabaret license is producing their complaints, it becomes a, a, a police and building department enforcement matter. So. Okay. Thank you. All right. All in favor? I, I motion approved.
Hi.
All right, Nicole, the last of our resolutions.
Okay.
Two.
Uh, resolve that the board of trustees hereby approves the request from Colin Higgins, one oh seven Sarus Lane to hold a block party on August sixth, twenty twenty-two. And thereby close Congress Street from two P M. Until nine P M.
Is there a second? Second. Block party attachment, uh, application attached. Uh, here's hoping it's a little cooler as it sounds like it may be next weekend. We hope you all have a good time on Congress Street. All in favor? I, I. Motion approved. That was the last of our, uh, resolutions. May I ask again that, uh, any of our attendees have any comments, questions, uh, member of the public on any subject? Raise your hand in the Zoom chat if you have a question. I see none. Uh, so, uh, this is the second of our two meetings in August. Uh, as you already heard, we scheduled a public hearing for that parking matter, uh, at our first meeting in August, which is on Monday, August eighth. Work session at seven, a regular meeting at eight. Uh, as has been the case recently, you can attend here at eighty Wheeler Avenue, but you can also pick up the Zoom link at plezenvilge-nyc.gov uh, and, uh, watch and or participate uh, remote our, uh, effort here to, uh, try out using Zoom and to reduce our our reliance on the uh, stretched resources of PC TV is in a test at the moment to see whether this is a reasonable solution for us to use our, uh, automatic recording gizmo with the owl, uh, and to record, uh, that way. And then to give that tape to uh, the folks at PC TV to put up at P C T V seventy-six dot org. So uh, let us know how you think that's going, if you have an opinion. Um, meanwhile, is there a motion to adjourn? I still have a second. Second. All in favor? I, I. Good evening. Thank you for your attention. See you on August eighth.